Good afternoon. It's four o'clock and we've arrived at the time for our semi-monthly county commission meeting. I'd like to thank you all for attending. We are honored to begin our meeting today with a prayer that will be led by Laura Fairchild. She is a member of the Interfaith Council and represents the Bahal faith. Thank you.
I'd like to share a prayer for mankind. Oh thou compassionate lord, oh thou who art generous and able, we are servants of thine, sheltered beneath thy providence. Cast thy glance of fear upon us, give light to our eyes, hearing to our ears, and understanding and love to our hearts. Render our souls joyous and happy through thy glad lighting. Oh lord, point out to us the pathway of thy kingdom, and resuscitate all of us through the breaths of thy holy spirit. Bestow upon us life everlasting and bestow upon us never-ending honor. Unify mankind and illumine the world of humanity. May we all follow thy pathway, longing for thy good pleasure, and seek the mysteries of thy kingdom. Oh god, unite us and connect our hearts with thy indissoluble bond. Verily thou art the giver, thou art the kind one, thou art...
Thank you.
Thank you. Our pledge this afternoon will be led by Steve Byrd. Steve is a retired air force officer judging from all of...oh sergeant. Is it a master sergeant? No. Chief master sergeant and from American Legion Post 100. Thank you.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you Steve and thank you for your service to our great country.
I'd like to thank Steve. I can vouch for his good character and...
(Laughter) I don't think too many guys make chief without having good character. It's a great honor. Okay, our consent agenda today consists and it is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on our regular agenda.
Nope. No removal, but I can read in for the minutes.
Oh yes.
Items, or do you want to...need to take the items one by one or just motion?
Are you making a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve the consent agenda as presented on the...
And I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve today's consent agenda. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds unanimous, so if I hear all of them say aye, I don't have to ask if there are any nays, right Eric?
That's correct.
Good. Okay. Our first item of business is one that I always like. It's when Kevin Bundell comes down from the state of Utah and brings a small pilt payment for us and we always appreciate him no matter large or small.
Thank you commissioners. Could I? Um, you know, I was, as I come down, it's ironic. I deliver these to nine different counties in southern Utah and Washington County sure has by far the largest budget, get the smallest check. For $117.19 this year to be exact. Really the purpose of coming down is to just make sure that we're coordinating well. I know you guys work a lot with Rick Freida who I have here with me and his crew. They work really hard in the face of the development, the growth that's going on in Washington County to make sure that that's facilitated and done in a way that it's also the conservation is being done and that things are being protected. And actually they're doing more than just protecting. They've...several of the fish species in the Virgin River are better off now than they have been in a long time, thanks to their efforts and that will continue to allow the growth to take place. And as you know, that can be something that halts growth in lots of places and I'm glad that I have Rick here and he has a great staff and appreciate his efforts. And is there anything that we need to visit about otherwise? Anything, any concerns or questions you need me to take back?
I'm looking to see if anybody else has anything to say, but I've known Rick for, well since the late 90s and I'm not sure how long he's been here working, but I'm afraid that one of these days he's gonna wanna retire, so you need to watch him.
How many years, how many years Rick? 28 years?
So anyway, he is great to work with and he's interfaced with us with the tortoise and our endangered species and a lot of our planning issues, technical committee over the years. A great relationship and we appreciate working with the Division of Natural Resources.
Thank you.
And come anytime you wanna bring a check.
Well, here you go.
Do you have a question, Chairman? What's the status of the Willow Flycatcher?
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) Well, embrace the Willow Flycatcher recovery. It was listed as federally endangered throughout the southwest and so under the Virgin River program, which is a broad-based collaborative program to reconcile conflicts between primarily water development and species conservation, we incorporated recovery, the Willow Flycatcher in. So we picked that up about eight, nine years ago. Since that time, we've been working with cities, communities, particularly St. George, Washington, purchased some of the wetland property along there, in a couple cases working with private landowners to try to restore those and we've seen a pretty good uptick in flycatcher numbers in here. We'll have Christian come to the HCAC sometime in the next couple of months, give an update on that process as well. Happy to share that information with you guys at times, so.
Good to know. I live right across from the Dixie Center above the Virgin and as you know, they took a lot of tamaracks out of there and replaced them with willows and the willows are finally getting back to the natural state and probably, I've never seen so many Willow Flycatcher that are our yard on the river.
Well, that's one of the spots that you've seen firsthand that changed from kind of a tamarisk dominated to the willows, the same upstream from there. Soon as that happened, flycatchers moved right back in, so we've been able to get some good work so far on those, so.
Now, my only question though commissioners, how did you know it was a Willow Flycatcher?
I could tell by the song.
You listened to the song?
Well, Rick's put a little chain around their neck saying, "I am a Willow Flycatcher."
That's around their foot actually.
Is it? Yeah, yeah. Well, I can't see their feet.
While I'm up here, I just wanna take a quick opportunity to say how much it's been a pleasure working with you guys, not just recently but through the years and it's, we're excited to continue that process, so thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item number two, consideration of purchase requests and ratification of purchase requests. Ray?
Okay. The first couple we have here is for the Dixie Center. The first one is for new carpeting in the concourse area for a total of $56,541.16.
Ray, can I ask a question on that one?
Sure.
It appears that, when you say concourse area, that's the entire this floor, or is it?
We've got Terry.
Yeah, I believe it's the...
Didn't see Terry here.
First floor.
Yep.
And does that include the labor?
It does include the labor.
Probably should note...
That's all of the concourse area except for the area that is just north of the garden room. You remember being in the building, there's a concrete barrier between that section there that it...
I just see new carpet for concourse, but I don't see where it says labor. I'm trying not to be blind, but...
It's in there.
It's included in the cost.
Can we write it in there before we write him a check?
Mm-hmm. I certainly can.
Materials and labor.
Fix that.
Otherwise Terry might have to install it.
Yeah.
Not really.
I can adjust, I can adjust the requisition to pull those totals out and show them separately.
Here it says the fourth line down, glue-down carpet, oh, I'm sorry, on the contract here, glue-down carpet per square yard.
Okay. This is just the purchase record.
Yeah, I just don't have that, so I didn't know. I just wanted to make sure that it was labor as well.
Yeah, they actually have it broken out really well, removal and glue and labor and...
Great, I just didn't have that, so thanks.
And I'd like to thank Terry for really working hard on this. He's had some initial prices, but he kept sharpening things up and he's got the final bid, $30,000 lower by getting that out and getting a...
Great.
A large number of qualified bidders to bid on it, so.
Alright, so I'll fix that for ya. Okay, the second one is for 14 Microsoft Surface Books. These are laptops to help with the smart building technology and that's a total of And then the next one is for emergency services. This is for a new trailer that has the electronic sign on it and it's a grant-funded regional asset, so it'll be dispersed to whomever needs it and that's a total of $14,924. Next one is for our IT department. It's for new licensing that allows us to run through the database software for our Eagle programs, on-base programs and GIS programs. And that's a total of $22,339.71. This will be split into four different payments, one per quarter for $5,584.93 per quarter. Next one is for equipment fuel for the Rose Department in a total of $19,245.96. And onto the sheriff's office, the first one is for annual dues and annual training assessment fees for the Utah Sheriff's Association for a total of $11,283.10. And the final one is the ratification that we need to do. It's for software for the Spillman program and it has failed repeatedly in the last couple of times.
Actually for a new server. Hardware.
Oh, did I say software? Sorry, hardware. My apologies. And I've got information that because we were able to expedite this purchase, the new delivery is expected on Friday and they will work over the weekend to get that booted up and all the information transferred. And that's a total of $49,217.98. And just a little side note, that was budgeted for this year anyway, it just needed to be purchased sooner than expected.
I'll speak to the commissioners about that a little bit. I had the sheriff's office write a letter explaining the exigent circumstance of why this needed to be ratified. In other words, we've already gone ahead and purchased it. The Spillman server is the common piece of hardware that handles all of the computer-assisted dispatch and CAD screens that all of our police officers, for every municipality, from Ivans to Hurricane, the county sheriff's office, our attorneys use that to access...I didn't see you back there Sheriff, I'd let you be explaining all of this. But the Spillman server is something that we have to have up. It's an integral piece of hardware that we need for the officers to be able to do their job and it started crashing on them and taking some data with it and so they had to reconstruct things. So we moved rapidly to secure a new one and we're just bringing this to the public now and for this ratification vote, but that was the reason for it. One other comment I'd like to make on these 14 Smart, or these Surface Books, laptop computers for the Dixie Center. I did call Terry up and ask about them. They've got a smart building concept, so different people who lease rooms and things like that and do presentations. In the past, we've had Macs or people have brought whatever and it's made it a challenging IT environment to keep everything working properly. And so we're going to supply the Surface Book for these venues. They've assured me that they've got a means of keeping them safe and showing them when they're not being used, but it's so that they could run up to 14 different room rentals in the Dixie Center simultaneously with county-supplied Surface Books instead of people bringing their own computers and then wondering why it worked at home, but it won't work there. And so, anyway, Ray, any other questions for Ray?
No.
So when they accidentally take one of those home, we can track them with the Spillman?
That's right, we could.
Yeah.
Bring that back.
Alright, commissioners, I'd accept a motion to...
Without Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase request and the one ratification purchase that has been presented.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the purchases and ratification, all in support of the motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three, consideration of ordinance number 2019-11-30-O, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County adjacent to Interstate 15 at the Snowfield exit on the northwest side from the C3 zone to the C2 zone here and after, fully described in this ordinance. Mr. Massel?
Well, you said most of what I need to say, but the Berna Conde owns quite a bit of property off the Snowfield exit. You may remember a couple of months ago and with another zone change, rather than doing, would've been easier for her to come in with a large PD development and have everything all put together in that and then she could've received blanket approval for everything, but she didn't wanna handle it that way and wanted to do each piece individually. And so this piece was originally Zone C3, but what she is wanting to put on this piece is she's moving the RV, where she wants to have the RV park, to this piece and the RV park is only permitted in the C2 zone and so she's requesting the zone change. Went to Planning Commission, Planning Commission reviewed it and recommended approval unanimously and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You held a public hearing?
Yes. Public hearing was held in November.
Did you have any opposition to the...
No, no one spoke for or against it in the meet, in the public hearing.
So my understanding, she's actually moving to a more restrictive zone than she was previously.
Correct, yes.
Except I visited with Eric about this and for the particular use that she wants as an RV park, it's only suitable in a C2 zone. So even so, even though the C3 may be less restrictive, our county ordinance does not allow for that use in that zone.
And we've talked in the past that this is one of the things that we're gonna look at when we dive into our commercial ordinances and see if there's more, if things are listed in appropriate zones or not.
Any other questions for Scott? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ordinance number 209, 2019-11-30-O, zoning a certain portion of Washington County adjacent to I-15 at the Snowfield exit on the northwest side from C3 zone to C2 zone here and after, fully described in this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the ordinance, all in support. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Thank you Scott. Item number four, consideration of ordinance number 2019-11-31-O, an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 15 of the Washington County Code. Eric, could you walk us through that a little bit?
Sorry about that title commissioners, we should've gotten a more descriptive title on that and we'll do better at that in the future. This is, this is more a technicality than anything else. Under state law, we have the option of having insurance cover any, I was gonna say preventative, but anything that potentially that an elected official could do that would be not in the public's interest, that could bring liability on that person individually. We have an option of having insurance cover that risk or of going out and bonding for each person individually. And our insurance carrier, our insurance pool covers that, just to make sure that we're following the letter of the law. This goes through and puts the limits of that coverage, of the minimum limits that are required in our county ordinance, so that anybody who's running for office in the future can look and say, "Well, this is the risk that I'd be taking on" or "This is how protection I'd have." And so it goes through and lists those specific numbers and puts them into our code. These are the numbers that we're covered at already and we have historically been covered, it just is something that's out there for public...
And do these numbers actually come from state code or is that established a minimum or is it something that we're establishing by ordinance at this time?
It's the one, it's the last. You guys are setting these.
Alright, thank you for that explanation.
Very good. Well, I just wonder why the sheriff's 20,000, the assessor's 20,000, the rest of us are just 5,000, so.
You can tell who's more important.
Must be more risk in those jobs.
Yeah, they're reckless.
Yeah, reckless.
I think we're saying all that and the sheriff's not here anymore.
Yeah, sheriff steps out, he doesn't even get my jokes, so. At any rate, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2019-11-31-0, an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 15 of the Washington County Code.
Hey, thank you Commissioner. Do a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2019-11-31-O. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I have a Boy Scout who snuck into the back of the room.
Oh gosh, let's recognize it. Would you introduce him for us?
Is that okay? Logan, would you come on up? He's grown out of his scout shirt already, but this is Logan Thompson and he is working very hard on a citizenship in the community merit badge.
Very good. Congratulations Logan.
I told him that if he'd come, he could turn around and look at the TV camera and then he could be on TV, so.
(Laughter)
Thanks Logan.
Thank you Logan.
Thanks Logan.
Thanks Commissioner.
You bet. Thank you Eric. And thank you for your service. Are you working as a scoutmaster or something?
Just as a merit badge counselor.
Merit badge counselor, super. Okay, item number five. Oh, this is a fun one. I always like when we recognize great things that are happening in our county. Item number five, consideration of resolution number R2019-2429, a resolution appropriating expenditures of funds collected as Washington County's share of the Recreation Arts and Parks Sales Tax. Marty, I saw you sitting back there. Would you take just a second and come up and tell us a little about your committee and the process that you followed in making this recommendation that we now have before us?
I'd be happy to do that, thank you. Yeah, we're really grateful to the citizens of Washington County for voting in this tax. It's been, it's been a huge benefit to the citizens and also to the tourism in Washington County. And I'm fortunate enough to sit on that board and as a volunteer citizen board, we go through the process to make sure that we allocate funds as equitably as possible. And we've gone through that process. That process has included several meetings. Those meetings have been edited, recorded, and we've followed all the guidelines and requirements to distribute those funds. We've also reviewed all the applications and also if someone had received funds in a prior year, we've reviewed their spending review and everyone, all of the, all of the award, awards that we made this year, all the candidates met all of the requirements both for the current application and for prior year, prior year reports. And so we've, we've made a recommendation of distributing $520,000 to arts organizations, arts museums and cultural, cultural organizations and that's for commission to approve.
How many of these artists might be present today?
I don't know. Is there anybody here?
Okay.
I guess I'm an artist, so.
Well, occasionally...
And you guys are politicians, so you're artists too.
When they go through this process, and I know that they have to go through quite a vetting process to get through this, demonstrating value to the community and to the patrons and...
Yeah, it is.
Oftentimes they have enough interest that they're here and so if they were, I'd like to recognize them.
Hi Commissioner, I'm Doug Caputo. I haven't actually directly applied for a grant, but I'm recipient of a grant from the Anna Arts Foundation, probably some more that I don't even know about, so. I just wanna say I'm a huge proponent of the RAP tax and if anybody doesn't know, all the communities, or the overwhelming majority of communities in the state that have passed a similar tax, when it has come to sunset and time to revote on that, they've, over the majority of them have passed at a higher ratio of vote than the first time they passed, so.
It's almost been over, an overwhelming pass, 80, 90%.
Exactly. So we're investing in a huge, huge future for not only ourselves, but people that come beyond us and I think it's a great thing, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Caputo.
Thank you very much. I just, just like to note, as we've gone through the applications and kind of tried to quantify the impact to Washington County, we sum up hundreds of thousands of visitors, thousands of people in Washington County that participate with arts organizations. And when I talk about the RAP tax, I'm a huge proponent as well and when I talk about it to my friends and neighbors, they say, "Ah, another tax." I said, "Well, it's one penny out of every $10 and a lot of that is paid by visitors to our county." And I go, "Oh, that's not so bad." So, thank you again.
You know, a couple of observations, back when I was on the city council when this just began, this list was half as long. I think that's also brought organizations that said, "We will never be able to do this on our own," to have the legitimate desire to request some funds. When you look at their past budgets, are they able to carry forward some if they have it, if they haven't spent all their prior allocation? Is that part of the observation that you've made? Or do they spend every last penny, which sometimes they do?
Well, we actually kinda want them to spend what we provide to them. And just to give a frame of reference, our total request for grants this year was over $900,000 and so we, you know, basically gave $520,000. So we had to make some tough decisions on...
Sure.
What was best for Washington County, what's best for the citizens, what organizations were best equipped to deal with what they were asking for. And so, you know, that, all of that is taken into consideration, so.
Is the 520 the complete amount that we receive or pretty much?
Well, there's a little bit of art in that one because we don't know exactly what the allocation is until later in the year, but based on last year and the growth that we've seen, it's, we think it's gonna be really close. Plus, we do have some reserve that we can hand on. And as we go through each, each new process, we'll continue to refine that up and down as needed.
Perfect.
I just wanna thank all of those who've worked. Doug was on the first board as a, just to remind everybody how this is, 15% of the overall RAP was set aside for particularly arts and the rest of it went back to the communities to focus on recreation and their needs inside their community based on population point of sale. But that first committee and the committee following them have just done a fantastic job at establishing very good processes, a very good way to evaluate art groups to, and I've just really appreciated all of the work that the committee members have always put into this, where you've, you've given... Where you've, you've given the proper amount, you haven't, you know, given too much to, to a group that isn't ready for it, but yet you've given enough to allow art groups to start to grow and thrive in our community. So thank you. I, I've just always appreciated the diligence and hard work. And every time we have a, a position, I'm just amazed at the quality individuals in our community that want to come forward, want to support the arts. This is a community that really does support its arts, I believe, has a great artistic community, I believe.
I'll make just two final points if I may. First of all, the committee functions very well. They are, we have some very talented people on our committee. But all of our recommendations are unanimous. There is nobody that's saying, oh, well, you should have given this or that. We all come together and reach unanimous decisions on what we're going to be granted. As we've continued to grow, we've, we've got, I'll highlight three new grants this year that we've not, organizations that we've not granted to in the past. One is for a children's choir that we'll be starting up. Another is for the Zion Youth Symphony. And another is Shakespeare in the Park out in Santa Clara. So we're excited about the momentum that we have in the arts. Fantastic.
Oh fun.
Exciting things. Thank you again. Thank you.
Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2019-2429, a resolution appropriating expenditures of funds collected as Washington County's share of recreation arts and parks tax.
Second.
Hey, motion has been made and seconded in support of resolution R-2019-2429. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
I always like to tell this story, you know, because I came in midterm and this was on the first agenda. And as a fairly skittish person on taxation to, to vote to put the RAP tax on in my very first meeting was a little bit intimidating, but it's turned out well.
Yeah, you did it. Okay, item number six. Consideration of resolution number R-2019-2430, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board recommendations to support the Christian congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses. I might call Brittany up, but I might not. I, I chaired the Tourism Tax Advisory Board and the resolution before us this afternoon, Commissioners, is one that would allow basically the Dixie Center to be offered at less than its normal value for the purpose of bringing this group in. This group comes in June, July. It's hot. It's a great time to bring these kinds of groups. And Brittany, how many people typically come?
Um, it depends on the event, but right around 1,000 to 10,000 a week.
That is, is a big event. And so the reason for that then is, is to do that. In the Tourism Tax Advisory Board Day overwhelmingly supported it and I do as well, but I would entertain any of your questions or motions to approve.
I think it's a fantastic event and it does exactly what TRT's supposed to do, which is help fill hotel rooms and, and bring people in to take advantage of the, the very businesses that are paying that tax and so.
And the fantastic summer weather that we've got.
Yes.
Commissioners, just, just to kind of clarify on this, you know, this is a religious organization. And, and that does create a few extra things that we're just careful about. We don't treat a religious organization differently than we would treat someone else coming in and applying for something. And we make sure that we don't ever favor one religious organization over another. And, and the, the recommendation on this one that came from the Tourism Board has nothing to do with the fact that it's a religious organization. It has everything to do with the time of the year and the number of people coming in.
Thank you for mentioning that. I just thought that since it mentioned it right in the resolution that it is that kind of an organization, I wouldn't try to hide that at all. And the reason for it is heads in beds. Hey. We've got a motion in Commissioner?
Yeah, I just made that motion.
Second.
A second. All then in support of passing resolution R-2019-2430, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you Brittany. Number seven, consideration of resolution number R-2019-2431, a resolution implementing fraud prevention recommendations. Eric, maybe you'd explain that one again for us?
Yep, thanks Commissioners. This is one that, um, the State Auditor's Office has a statutory obligation to periodically review the internal controls of different counties. And so they launched a big project to do this and they, they inventoried all the counties around the state and had everybody kind of answer a lengthy questionnaire. They interviewed elected officials and then they came up with official findings for each one. And as they were, they were kind of wrapping that up, they stood up in an auditor meeting to all the state auditors and held our county up as an example of a county that just has great auditor's office, great internal controls, and is careful about the way that we handle our money. So, you know, kudos to our auditor of the year back there.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
But they, they, their job was to find things and they did come up with five recommendations of things that we could do to tighten things up. And so what this resolution does is put into policy those five things. And what they are is the first is there'll be a new link on the county clerk auditor website that is a fraud reporting button. So if anybody sees anything that they suspect might be fraud or, or waste of government resources, they can just go on there and click and, and send that in. We're also putting in our employee policy manual that our employees are obligated to report anything that they suspect might be fraud or abuse. And that that is, that is a, we've always had that expectation, but we're putting it in there very clearly that as a condition of their employment, all of the employees have that obligation of reporting. And then if any information ever comes in, either through the button or through normal channels of an employee reporting to a supervisor, we're putting in place a process where that, that complaint will initially go to a representative from the county commission office, or representative from the clerk auditor's office, and representative from the human resources department. And, and that group will kind of decide how to best run that investigation if any individuals or departments need to be screened off from that because they may have a conflict, they may be involved. And so we just have a kind of a formal process set up to make sure that any, anything that comes in is handled appropriately. The last two things that they recommended are that the county commissioners meet with our external auditor. Every year the external auditor comes in and reports in commission meeting. There may be times where the external auditor finds things that she doesn't want to come in and advertise publicly because it might be something where we're more susceptible to somebody stealing something or, or getting confidential information. So starting this year, the commissioners will meet administratively with our clerk auditor and our external audit company in a, in a private meeting so that you're just able to have those conversations super openly and not put at risk any information that shouldn't be out in the public. And the last one is that the state auditor's office provides training for county commissioners and, and we commit that our stellar county commissioners will make sure and do that if required by the.
Hey, thank you for that great explanation.
You know, because we have the auditor of the year, we've been doing all of these practices. Really what we're doing in this resolution is simply putting into writing what pretty much been our best, our practice.
Anyway. Chairman, all this is in addition to all the existing protections for whistleblowers.
I would. He's not done yet, so. So let's handle the resolution and then I would like to petition the commissioners to make just a small change in the agenda.
Yes.
So you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
So I move that we approve the resolution R-2019-2431, implementing fraud prevention recommendations as introduced.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, I'd like to just pause on item eight for just a second to recognize Mr. Kim Hafen for 10 years of outstanding county service. Kim, would you like to come up? I don't think we're empowered to do that, but we'd like to recognize you for the great job that you do.
Ah, he's a good sport. And the auditor of the year.
Item number eight. Consideration of resolution number R-2019-2432, a resolution approving an agreement between the Washington County Council on Aging and Valley Services, Inc. regarding food services provided to the council on aging. Christine, will you come tell us what this is all about?
Thanks Commissioners. In 2016, we went from an individual, uh, private person doing our food services for the senior centers to a corporation that does them for us now. And it was a pretty rough first year, but since then they've done really well. We had a two-year contract where they kept the price the same and then we have three one-year extensions. And last year we took advantage of one of those extensions and this year we're going to try to take advantage of the second extension. And the extension that they've given us this time had a 2%, 2% increase in each of the meals that we have. That was the consumer price index, is that?
Yep.
That's what I thought. And so we felt really good about that. And as I went back looking at what we originally put in the RFP when we put it out in 2015, we are still 7% below what the pricing was at that time. So even though these funds don't come exactly out of the county coffers, they come passed through funds through five county association of governments. Um, I still feel like that we're really getting a lot of bang for our buck with this company and we've had a good working relationship with them and hopefully we'll have another extension next year. So that's what I'm here for.
Well, thank you. I worked with Chris a lot when she worked with individual vendors for doing this and it just seems like you smile a lot more now.
I smile a lot more now. They have to worry about that. I don't have to get involved too often.
Thank you Chris. Thank you for the great job that you do.
Can you give us an idea of how many meals they provide and?
Well, I actually have a figure available. From January 1st of 2018 to December 31st of 2018, we serve 26,239 congregant meals and 57,013 home-delivered meals for a total of 83,252 meals. That does not include people that are under 60 or anything. That's just actually what we give for reimbursement through five counties. So they actually even provided more meals than that for us, so.
Probably one of the bigger food service operations in town then.
We're very definitely right up there, yeah. And, and they've been good. They've also been bought out by their competitor who wanted to come down and bid the next time we had an RFP. So not sure how that's going to go, but they've been acquired. And now Bateman, who is the other company in them, says they're both the same company, so.
Oh wow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2019-2432, resolution approving an agreement between Washington County Council on Aging and Valley Services, Inc. regarding food services provided to the council on aging.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in support of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of resolution number R-2019-2433. This is a resolution amending the fees for services for the Washington County Justice Court. So Lotte, would you come tell us just a little bit about the fingerprinting service that you offer and, and how you arrived at this fee?
Thanks Commissioners. Yes, so we recently received the fingerprint machine that was over at the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office indicated that they were doing a lot of the, uh, the court ordered book and releases that were ordered by our judges. And it just made a lot more sense to have the machine moved over to the court for the efficiency of completing the book and releases and also having it be available for the public. So we do court ordered fingerprints as well as fingerprints for anyone in the public that needs to come and have their fingerprints done.
Who might that be? Uh, who in the public needs to have fingerprints done?
All sorts of folks, yes. We get people that are applying, like adopting children. We have people that are in, work in the healthcare industry. We have folks that, um, I mean, you name it. Nowadays, it seems like everyone requires people to get a background check for employment, all of those things, so. Um, we, um, received the machine in the middle of December and we've, we're open pretty much every day except for Friday and we're busy all day long. So, um, but we have received an overwhelming response from folks to say, thank you for letting this machine be available so they don't have to drive all the way out to the sheriff's office. And so people have appreciated that. Did you want me to talk a little bit about like the fees?
Your fee schedule recommends $20 and a dollar for each additional card. Is that based on the amount of time? How did you arrive at that?
Yes, so we arrived at the fee schedule based on the fact that we have a full-time person that we hired that works the machine Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day. And it's pretty, it's pretty standard, it's a pretty standard fee compared to what other people charge. $1 for every additional card. We do, the machine is electronic and so we have direct submission to BCI which allows folks to, we can print out the cards and give them directly to the people or we can also submit them electronically to BCI, which people appreciate that. And the machine actually tells us exactly if it's, if it's rejected, it'll tell us it's rejected and we can just reprint it right there rather than when, like back in the day, right? Your, all your fingers would be covered in ink and, and you wouldn't know until you sent it in and they rejected it. So it's, it's a quick response. Obviously the court ordered ones are free. We do not charge when the, when the judge orders folks to have their fingerprints done. And then we do do a four press fingerprint where we do still use an ink and that is $10 because that, that process only takes about five minutes to complete.
Hey, thank you for that explanation.
What do you charge for each additional finger?
$1. Thanks Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. I suppose now that you've got all of your questions answered, you're going to make a motion in support of the resolution?
I sure am. Um, I just find it interesting, the four fingerprint. Uh, it is requirement that people in the securities industry are, have been forever. So people that sell stocks and bonds and, and all sorts of financial instruments have to do that and be upgraded or updated. All right.
Of course, it really didn't protect us against Bernie Madoff.
Well, you know, that was the name that came to mind and that's what I was asking about all those extra fingers. Okay, so, number nine. I move that we approve the resolution R-2019-2433, amending the fees for services for the Washington County Justice Court.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Chairman, I think it's wise that we should point out that there are private individuals that can provide this service as well and that this brings us at some sort of even playing field with them, if not even cheaper.
Maybe a little less money than we do.
Maybe even a little less, but at least I wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Item number 10, consideration of resolution number R-2019-2434, a resolution establishing the Washington County Commission as the governing authority of the Rockville Springdale Fire Protection District. I think I'd like to speak to this one Commissioners. At our last commission meeting, the commission voted to expand the boundaries of the Rockville, of the Hurrican Valley Fire Special Service District to include the areas formerly covered by the Rockville Springdale Fire Special Service District. We've done that with the intent of, before the end of the year, actually dissolving the Rockville Springdale District and all of those services then being provided by the. the Hurricane Valley Fire Department. Because of that expansion and because a contract is already in place for Hurricane Valley to provide those services and they are providing those services currently, the work that is left to be accomplished is really the, the transfer of the real assets and, uh, other assets from the Rockville Springdale District. Uh, and this is paper titled transfer that I'm talking about. I think all of those physical assets are basically going to remain where they're at. But to facilitate that transfer, there has to be someone who can sign on it. And previously, this body voted to already assume authority for everything that was over $10,000. Just to finish up any wrap-up and with no other business for the old board to do. This seems to be just a logical next move as we, uh, progress to the, uh, final expansion, uh, which would, uh, take place with the dissolvment of the other district and all of the paperwork being filed with Lieutenant Governor's Office and Hurricane Valley then formally taking that area over. So any other questions, anything that maybe I could explain for you?
And again, all done in the interest of public safety. And for efficiencies too.
Yeah, that was a very good explanation. One that we've talked about quite a few times. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we adopt resolution R dash 2019 dash 2434. Resolution establishing the Washington County Commission as the governing authority of the Rockville Spring, Springdale Fire Protection District.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of resolution R 2019-2434. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 11, consideration of resolution R 2019-2435. A resolution approving a cooperative agreement between Washington County and the Utah Department of Transportation regarding the rebuilding of a local road under I-15 at mile post 40 and mile post 42. I'm looking to see if Ron was here to speak to that. Todd is. An engineer.
Thanks commissioners for letting me talk on this. Um, just to give you a little background, the roads that go underneath the overpasses on, or underneath the overpasses on the freeway have been in conflict for a long time. We felt like they were UDOTs because they were in the UDOT right of way. They felt like they were ours because we had a road on each end. And by policy, they gave them to us basically. Uh, problem was over the last 20 years or so, they hadn't been maintained by either entity very well. And so these are two exits that are on the far north end. Uh, they're subject to some freeze thaw and, and hot holing, a little bit more than some of our other ones. Uh, UDOT's doing a project this next year to add a climbing lane up in that area. So we have pretty much three lanes going north most all the way. And as part of that, they were going to damage part of our road under there, underneath the structures. And they were going to have to replace those. And so we got with them and saw how much it would cost for them to replace our road all the way through. And it was much more cost-effective for us to do it that way than it was for us to try to go in there and do it ourselves. They've agreed to not charge us any, uh, you know, fees for mobilization or for inspections or traffic control. Just the hard costs of replacing the asphalt and road. So I'd recommend that we approve these two. It's very cost-effective. Uh, we'll rebuild those roads to something that we can maintain. Right now we'd just be patching them and would basically have to tear it out and start over anyway.
Is this going to give us any resolution to the question of who's responsible for what's going on?
By state mandate, those are our roads. So now we'll have something we can maintain. So that's why we're happy to see these get paved. We will then use our own maintenance methods in keeping those in good shape.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd?
No.
During the construction, who, who owns the land underneath it? We do?
UDOT.
UDOT owns the land under those portions that are on the map. But they've said that we're going to, from here on out, then maintain the road. They thought we were prior to this anyway.
Right. It's, it's a convoluted kind of a who gets to take care of the cattle guards? Who gets to take care of the signs, the stop signs? They, they have quite a convoluted little, uh, method of deciding who that is, but, but it's been in place for a number of years now and and it's reasonable, I think.
The question for Eric then is, if they're reconstructing our road on their property, who has the liability of any endangerment to the people building the road?
So, I mean, ideally, UDOT always has all the liability to everything, right? The, the con, so the liability would stay with whoever was responsible for the action that would put something at risk. So if, if the contractor's out there and, and leaves a pile of material where people are going to run into it, contractor would be negligent for that. If, if, if the extent of our involvement is contracting for the service to be done, as long as we're hiring a, a reasonably safe contractor with a good reputation, then our liability shouldn't increase at all from, from this going on. We also have some government immunities from things like this, but those don't apply to latent that roads. Those generally do fall back to the contractor or the entity if we're not careful in hiring the
Just, just for clarification on this one, this is UDOT hiring a contractor. We're simply doing a reimbursement agreement. So we will have no contractual relationship with the contractor.
That's what I was after, so thank you. You ready for a motion?
I am.
A move that we approve resolution R 2019-2435. Approving a cooperative agreement between Washington County and the Utah Department of Transportation regarding the rebuilding of local road under I-15 at mile post 40 and 42.
I'll second that.
Commissioner.
Sorry, I got sidetracked there.
Hey, the motion has been made, seconded, all in support of the motion, say aye.
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 What happens is sometimes I second things in my mind.
Yeah. You're just ahead of us. Number 12. Consideration of resolution number R 2019-2436. A resolution approving an inter-local cooperation agreement with Utah Department of Natural Resources for rare plant surveys in Washington County. While Cameron's coming up, speak to that. And I think we're pledging, what, $10,000? For this?
It's $12,000.
$12,000. I want to remind everybody, they did give us a check for $119 earlier. Okay, Cameron.
Yeah, that'll go a long way, right, for this one? So, uh, the habitat conservation plan that, that we established over 20 years ago had a fund for approximately $2 million that is spent for other species recovery. And rare plants is one of those other species that are listed within the county. And so last year we started an agreement with them to look at some of the rare plants that we have out in the proposed Zone 6 area. To see what kind of benefits that would have if we protected those lands. And a couple of things came out of that. We, we, we found that there were a, a lot of endangered dwarf bear poppies out there. There's home grins milk fetch in a few isolated locations. And then there may be shivwitz milk fetch. The problem with the, the shivwitz milk fetch and the home grins milk fetch surveys last year was that it was a really poor year, um, based on the precipitation or for other reasons. And they, they didn't find any of it in areas where they normally find a lot of it. And so we thought it would be a good idea to repeat those surveys this year to really determine if we have milk fetch populations in the Zone 6 area. But additionally, this proposal also covers, uh, other work. Um, where, that they want to do an overall vegetative assessment of the entire area. And then they'd like to establish a few monitoring plots to look at what would happen if we end up managing this for the desert tortoise. How do we manage with recreation and how does that change over time and how, how might the, the habitat recover a little bit? So that's what this covers and, and we do have the funds allocated for this. This year we budgeted for this and then, uh, HCAC did recommend to support this at the last meeting.
Thank you. Great explanation. Any questions for Cameron?
No, it should be a better year this year. Great rain and.
Now, are they able to walk with, on the trails to look at these plants or is this an aerial drone survey or?
Yeah, that's a good question. Last year we had to do some drone surveys over the AC EC because they were not authorized to walk on those lands either. Because that's, that research was successful, Fish and Wildlife Service actually decided to repeat the drone surveys, but they're going to fund that separately. Um, but, so this year we're not going in the AC EC, so they will be able to ground truth everything that they survey.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash 2019 dash, uh, 2436. Resolution approving an inter-local agreement with Utah Department of Natural Resources for rare plant surveys in Washington County.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in support of resolution R 2019-2436, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Chairman, um, a question before Cameron leaves. You mentioned recreation. This is outside the motion. When, is there a map? I mean, I know there is, but that road that's at the end of Navajo that heads out towards the west eventually gets up to, you know, Bulldog Pass and the caves and all that. Is this designated acreage on both sides of that road?
Yes, there, the, that road, as I recall, is kind of right down the middle of the proposed Zone 6 boundaries. And, and that road is currently proposed to stay open, um, even if it does get protected. We'd probably have to fence it off in, in certain areas to protect the habitat, but that road would remain open.
Be good to indicate, even though a different application of a road to, uh, Senator Romney. He discusses the Northern Corridor as well. Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, I'd like to recognize Mayor Pike has joined us. That means our meet, meeting is running longer than we normally want it to go.
We better pick up the pace or.
Here to see how the other half runs immediately.
Yeah.
Well, we're still only at an hour and so we've got to stretch this out another four or five hours to come into your realm, but we'll
Don't we need to bring in dinner or something like that?
All right, item number 13, consideration of resolution number R 2019-2437. A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Washington County and Hurricane City Power for the temporary placement of power poles for the rerouting of power lines at the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park. Is this a Todd or a Commissioner Iverson?
Well, I can speak to this really quickly. It's fairly simple. Hurricane Power needs to temporarily reroute their power so they can do some some more structural work on a bigger line through there. I want to say that this is a six-month agreement. They figured that, so I, I believe that the date is probably in May.
We've got Hurricane.
Start, yeah. Oh. Was I, uh, getting off track too far?
You were getting, hitting it really tight right there.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, it, it is six months. It'd probably be four months actually for us to be able to get this done. And this has to do with the Purgatory Flat Substation that Rocky Mountain Power recently has built. And that substation was built to, uh, uh, bring more capacity, energy for everyone in the county. And so to make that happen, the transmission line, which is actually owned by UAMPS, has to be rerouted. Basically taken completely down, rerouted so we get more so we can be able to get the capacity out of that substation. And to be able to make that happen, we have to take down the distribution line. This line, this temporary line allows us to reroute the power around that construction zone. So that the shooting park stays in power the whole time.
Super.
I just want to thank Hurricane for being such good partners on the, on the Shooting Sports Park, providing power for us. And, um.
Been a good partnership. It's brought a lot of people into the county and Hurricane and
Yeah.
And been a good deal.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash 2019 dash 2437, a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between Washington County and Hurricane City Power for the temporary placement of power poles for the rerouting of power lines of the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in support of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries. Item number 14, consideration of resolution number R 2019-2438. A resolution designating the name of the Shotgun Access Road at the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park as Nelson Whitmore Way. Would like to speak to that.
Well, since Ron's not here, I'll just talk to this. Brent and, and others involved in, in Purgatory Clay. Um, Mr. Nelson was just an institution, just somebody that was out there always volunteering, always helping. Just from the understanding that I've received back, just one of those really truly great individuals. And they just wanted to honor him after his passing as a, as a veteran, as somebody who served in the army and in the war, that, um, we'd name what was called Shotgun Way, you know, which had no real meaning. And, and, uh, name it for Mr. Nelson. For Mr. Whitmer.
Thank you. And that's a motion in support of it.
That is a motion in support of it.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in support of the resolution to rename the Shotgun Access Road as Nelson Whitmer, Whit, Whitmire Way. Please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Commissioners report, I will, uh, start off quickly just by stating that, uh, last week we had our first meeting, uh, as a body of the Utah Association of Counties. At the state capitol, as the legislature convened business and of course, uh, as county commissioners, we always hold our breath a little bit. We really value the relationship that we have with our local legislators and other legislators statewide. But I would like to, uh, compliment, uh, Commissioner Iverson as chairman of the, uh, Utah Association of Counties or president, whichever your title is. I think you just did a great job of running that first meeting and, and you've been an active force, uh, in the legislature, working on behalf of counties tirelessly. And it was fun to watch you work.
Well, thank you. Last week was, uh, the first week and it was, uh, felt like a marathon up there. There's a lot of big issues that impact all of us that they're tackling, so. And we're just getting started, but thank you. Thank you for that compliment.
Any other business? Hearing none, and we are at the end of our agenda. I'll, so the meeting adjourned.